We'll start our 2025 annual work session. So we just put together a bunch of topics that I think that we had questions on throughout the course of the last year. You know, particularly, you know, I think it's going to be variance heavy on the state, the state changes that have been made by the Supreme Court. And so I've asked, and I think here's our new member. And so I've asked our counsel Martin Krim to kind of address these issues. And guide us. I guess, should we, we have a new member, should we should probably just quickly go around the room and do introductions?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'll start. I'm Richard Kaplan. I'm chair for the next two hours of the BZA.
I'm Carol McCosker. I'm the newest member.
Formerly.
Besides yourself.
I'm Intamalas, the middle, in the middle, Judy Freshman.
Alex.
Let's get a, let's get another.
Krim.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, got Mike.
Hi, Alex Kumana.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, I will say, um, we had a no tie agreement, so I'm a little, I'm just saying.
I was, I just came from work, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm Martin Krim, your attorney. The red light comes on. There you're on.
I'm Anne Golsky with the county attorney's office.
Our lava bombs owning administrator. Nice to meet you.
And we skip, Patty just walked in as well.
Patricia Petracchioni.
Patricia Petracchioni, assistant to the BZA.
So I will, uh, I'll just turn it over to Martin Krim, who will handle the first couple items on our, uh, most of our items on our work session agenda.
Thank you. Um, I prepared a PowerPoint and I will be providing that to you after this. But right now, we're just going to have it up on the screen. If Megan, you could put that up. I would invite questions as we go along. Uh, I'm happy to be interrupted. Um, I think that works better for everybody. But I ask you to hold any questions about specific upcoming cases for another time because we might want to do that in a confidential setting. Either closed session or some kind of email. So, um, that's the first slide. Go to the second slide, please. Today, we're covering three basic topics. Um, the basics of variances, what they are and what they're not. The Valerie Holdings case out of Louisa County from February of last year. And the Americans with Disabilities Act variances, so that, um, those are, those are what I'm planning to hit most today. We can re, we can, um, address other topics if need be, but I'm not, not, there's no slides for them. So variances were originally conceived of as a safety valve, basically to prevent unconstitutional takings. Because the history of zoning law is that it, uh, as a restriction on the use of, of private property, was seen somewhat with suspicion for, well, still is, uh, in some quarters. And, uh, it's so particularly if the restriction on a property left it with basically no value, then that could be an unconstitutional taking. And that was the original purpose for variances was to, um, make allowances for properties that just didn't fit very well within the existing zoning ordinances. However, um, the General Assembly has expanded the use of variances in Virginia. So that is no longer limited just to those where it would be an unconstitutional taking without some kind of safety valve. So, um, that's, uh, a new standard. That's really what the Valerie Holdings case did. It followed the new statutory standard and we'll get to that in a minute. You sometimes see cases from other states about variances. They're not of much use to us in Virginia because a lot of other states have use variances where they allow a different use. That would be considered a rezoning in Virginia and is not allowed as a variance. If somebody's going to change the use on the property, then they're going to need to go and get a special use permit or a rezoning. Next slide, please. So Code of Virginia, section 15.22201, uh, provides this, uh, definition of a variance. And, um, it's, um, has recently been applied in the Avonlea case, which was September of last year, where the BZA lacked the statutory authority to grant a variance, um, to a zoning ordinance requiring access to parking. Because that was not, the access to parking requirement did not regulate shape, size, or area of a lot or parcel of land or, or a piece of, or a building. So, um, you have to be, analyze the request for, is this a deviation in the shape, size, or area of a lot or parcel of land? Or the size, height, area, bulk, or location of a building or structure? Those are the sorts of things that can be the subject of a variance. And if it doesn't fall into one of those two buckets, it is not a variance. It might be something else, but it's not a variance. And then, we're looking again for a safety valve kind of idea that if the strict application of the ordinance would be an unreasonable restriction on the property, then, uh, and it's not shared generally, and it's not contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, and it's not a change of use, then it could be a variance. And the new, next slide, please. The new statutes require the BZA to issue a variance if it makes, if it finds that the strict application would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property, or the variance would alleviate a hardship due to physical condition relating to the property or improvements thereon. Note that the unreasonable restriction language was on the previous slide, too. It's, um, never been fixed. It's not good legislative drafting to have the definition incorporate the term that includes the standard that you're trying to apply. But we just live with it. Um, so next slide, please. The required findings that you need to make to, to, for a variance are that the acquisition was in good faith, that the hardship that has been experienced by the property owner is not self-inflicted, that there won't be a substantial detriment to the neighboring or nearby properties, nearby is not defined. Uh, and the condition leading to the application is not of general or recurring nature. So that you would expect that the, or the supervisors would amend the, um, uh, the zoning ordinance. And the variance, again, can't change the use. And also that a special use permit or modification isn't available to grant the same relief. So, so if they could go to the zoning administrator and get a modification, which not something that this county has, but other counties do, then they would not be able to apply for a variance because it would be available through a different mechanism. If, uh, somebody could get a special use permit for the same thing they're asking for a variance for, you should turn down the variance because it's not allowed under this statute. The fourth bullet point there, the condition leading to the application not general or recurring, dovetails with a provision that, um, all applications need to be sent to the Planning Commission, so that it can keep track of what's being requested for variances. And the Planning Commission has the right to send you a report or to appear in person and talk to you and say, presumably, the only reason why they would show up would be to say, we don't think you should grant this because this is a recurring situation that we think, we meant it that way, or we're going to address it through some kind of zoning tax amendment. So, um, if, you know, if that happens, that is a thing that happens. The Planning Commission can send you a report or show up. Okay, next slide, please. So then we get to the trickier part, imposing conditions, because you can impose conditions on a variance. There are some criteria there that, that are required, that, that apply. And, uh, it's very difficult to do this in this course of a meeting. Because the, the US Supreme Court, uh, issued a decision a dozen years ago now called Kuntz, where the, uh, they reiterated some standards that had been floating around for a few years and said that any local land use decision has, that requires the property owner to do something that they otherwise wouldn't have to do, has to be, um, have a direct connection between the, the, the impact of what they're wanting to do and what you're asking them to do on your behalf. Uh, and it has to be roughly proportional. So, um, you couldn't say, I'll give you this variance if you make a $10,000 donation to the library. Because the variance has nothing to do with the library funding. You couldn't, um, in, in the Kuntz decision, um, that was, and that's why there's a swamp back there. There's, in that, in that photo, because the Kuntz decision involved a, a land use decision, uh, in a, an area that was wetlands. And they said, well, you can either give us some money or you can, uh, put the, these, you know, put aside all this land for Land Bank and, uh, reduce the amount of land that the, Mr. Kuntz wanted to develop on his, for his development. The, um, the court said, no, that wasn't, that was an unreasonable action. It was a taking of private property without just compensation because you denied him the permit because he wouldn't, he wouldn't do what you asked him to do. So what I would suggest is if conditions come up, unless they're an ADA condition, and I'll talk about in a minute, conditions really should be something that we look to staff to try to draft, what do you think the conditions should be, if any? And if there's no conditions from staff, um, then certainly the applicant could offer those, but I would still be leery about that. Because even if they offer some condition, it's not necessarily going to be something that you want to agree with. Because you haven't had an opportunity to study it. You don't have an opportunity to think about what the negative consequences might be from that. So I would steer away from, uh, conditions unless the staff has recommended them. With ADA, that's a little bit different in one respect. And with an ADA variance, you can limit that to the period of time that the disabled person needs that. So if it's a ramp to the front door that intrudes into the front yard that's not supposed to have any construction in it, then you could say, we're going to grant you the variance, condition on it, the variance ends when the person no longer needs a wheelchair or there's nobody living there that needs a wheelchair, something like that. And that's perfectly reasonable because what you're doing is basically an accommodation. And the purpose of the accommodation is to accommodate some particular person, persons. And after they no longer, they need the accommodation because they've moved away, passed away, whatever it is, then that, that, that need is, is gone and doesn't necessarily need to convey to the next person. Next slide, please. All right. So this is topic number two. This is the Valerie Holdings decision from last February. Aerial photos, this is Lake Anna. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it is a, essentially a very large cooling pond for the nuclear power plant that's run by Vepco. This is a spit of land that you can see clearly in the right-hand photo. And the, uh, the, uh, right at the eastern end of the lake, the left-hand photo shows you a little bit closer. The building in the middle is the building in question. And the gray line that runs all around three sides of that building and next to those boats is the property line. I think what happened here was that the, um, that, that Vepco condemned all the land up to a certain elevation point, elevation line. And so that's why that's a peculiar looking land, um, property line right there. Anyway, so you've got this property that's, this building is on this property and it's right up near the, the setback lines. And there's nothing on the ground. That's, that gray line has been imposed on the map and there's nothing on the ground to tell you where the property line is. Next slide, please. So, um, the Valerie Holdings people put this staircase in, um, not knowing or not caring whether, that it was in the setback area. They built this without a building permit. They built it without a survey. And it was, you know, the Vepco owns the adjacent property, so they, you know, Vepco was not particularly happy about that. But the county came in and said, you, you gotta tear that down. You gotta put the stair somewhere else. Uh, the problem was, um, this property had a very peculiar history. The, um, building was sold to Valerie Holdings as a shell. This, the existing staircase had been destroyed. The interior had been gutted by vandals. The whole place was a mess. There was really, um, you know, there was, there was a, a building, four walls, a roof, some doorways and windows, but it was not usable as it was at that point. So Valerie Holdings came in and, and, and bought this property. Um, next slide, please. So, looking at this situation, the Court of Appeals said, um, the 2015 amendments, um, make clear that the legislature intended to expand the availability of variances. That's now no longer the hardship approaching confiscation standard, but the much looser unreasonable hardship standard. Uh, and, and this, the court said that the statutory changes lower the bar for property owners seeking a variance. So if they, if you come in for seeking a variance, you no longer have to show that there's no reasonable use of the property or that, with a hardship approaching confiscation is just an unreasonable hardship. And that's a very broad category of things that the, the court's going to look at a lot of different factors. So, um, the, um, the court's also saying that prior case law is unreliable. If you go and look at any case before 2015, it's not going to be particularly helpful under the current statutory guidelines. So the, the bottom point, bullet point on this slide here is saying, this is a direct quote from the Valerie Holdings case. A BZA shall issue a variance if the effect of the zoning ordinance is to limit the use or enjoyment of the property in a way that is irrational, capricious, or not fair or sensible under the circumstances. Okay, well, what does that mean in, uh, this particular case? Um, next slide, please. So what is reasonableness and fairness? You, as the BZA, are going to have to decide whether to grant a variance based on the particular facts of a, an application. You're going to have to look at what's going on here with the history of this property, uh, how it was acquired, what happened to it before it was acquired, what, why, why is there a need for this variance? And so the unique circumstances, the property in this case were that, um, the property had been gutted. It had been changed hands a couple of times and this property owner couldn't see on the ground where the, the property line was. Court didn't really care that much that he, that they violated the building code by building this staircase without a, without a building permit. That's the sort of thing that irritates me because the building code is written in blood, meaning that everything in the building code is there because somebody got injured or killed. And you just don't ignore the building code in my book. But that didn't carry any weight with the court. And, uh, it was going to be expensive to put this, to tear the staircase down and put it somewhere else. Because, uh, relocating access to the second floor was unfeasible under the circumstances. And, and, you know, 15, 25, $40,000, anything in that range, you know, that starts to get into significant figures. The problem is, significant to whom? Because to Elon Musk, that's nothing. But to ordinary people, that's, you know, that could be the difference between a successful business and an unsuccessful business. So I respect that. Next slide, please.
Can I raise a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On this, because the other thing that bothered me was the court kind of said that it isn't just about the finances. In other words, and I think you have that in one of your bullets.
Yeah.
But what was, it's hard to see what the other factor, I guess the other factor was, there was no way to build access to this building without the stairway on that side.
Right.
So, which, I don't know about the shape of the property and all, it's, it's very odd. But I, it seemed, it seemed to me that that was a sort of a slim second purpose. And really, they were looking at the money. Would, but they say it's money alone isn't enough to justify a variance.
Right, right. And in this case, the second floor was also a different use. The first floor was commercial and the second floor was residential. So that's kind of a unique circumstance. They wanted to have a separate entrance. They didn't want to have to, people have to go through the commercial property to get to this, the residential on the second floor. All kinds of weird things. Um, so, um, sorry, apologize. The second thing that is the take-home message from Valerie Holdings is what is a self-inflicted hardship? Because older case laws found a lot of things to be self-inflicted hardships. You know, if you, you didn't plan ahead, you know, poor planning on your part does not constitute an automatic emergency. On my part, it's been the general rule. But the courts have held that it's some things were not self-inflicted hardship. And, uh, the, the Spence case, even before Valerie Holdings, found that simply acquiring property, knowing that you're going to have to get a variance, even knowing that somebody else had applied for a variance and been turned down, was not self-inflicted hardship. I don't, I can't wrap my head around that, I'm sorry. But anyway, in this case, uh, there was not self-inflicted hardship from going ahead and building a, a staircase without doing a survey, getting, uh, building permits and whatnot. And, you know, as I mentioned, the property line is where the property line is. And the door frames, plumbing and wiring were already installed. So they, they, you know, basically adapted to the circumstances that they had in front of them rather than coming to the county and saying, uh, you know, what can, can, what can we do with this property? Which would have, you know, been the right way to do it. Um, so, um, next slide, please.
Valerie?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, before we go on. So, have there, I guess it would be hard to know if there have been BCA's that have used the standard so far.
Yeah.
And so as far as we know, there's no further court action to maybe refine or redefine some of these standards.
Louisa County did not appeal the Court of Appeals decision.
So this is what we've got right now.
That's what we've got. It is, is, boy, I'm saying that a lot about Courts of Appeals decision. That, that's what we've got right now. But that, that is in fact what we've got. Um, it is an interesting situation and it kind of provides a roadmap for unscrupulous property owners on how to do things, which is you transfer the property to some holding company, like Valerie Holdings Holding Company. And they go in and apply for a variance because they didn't do any of the bad stuff that got them in the bad situation. Um, anyway.
Can I mention one thing? I, I don't know if everybody's aware, but, uh, the comment about the Court of Appeals decisions results from the fact that it used to be that all zoning cases went from the Circuit Court and were appealed directly to the Supreme Court of Virginia. And so the, um, Circuit Court of Appeals has only recently started considering appeals from zoning cases. So it's sort of a new area for them and that's why we're seeing some interesting decisions.
The intermediate Court of Appeals was created in the eighties, I want to say, and only heard criminal cases and workers' compensation and a couple of other topics before recently.
Domestic.
Domestic, yeah, thank you. Right, domestic cases. So now they have the full panoply of case types that they have not heard before. So they're, um, they're again, finding their, finding their footing, I guess you would say.
So, so we're, um, and, and we're seeing a lot of, or, or some cases that come before us where a number of attorneys are always citing Valerie regardless of whether the facts of that particular variance. You know, you know, this, I think this is pretty unique where, you know, arguably the second floor is cut off, right? You need access to it.
Right.
We're, we're like, we're getting cases where like a developer builds a house to the, the limits of the property and has a door coming out of the kitchen that can't be built outside, right? And now arguing Valerie, look, I can't get outside, right? And so, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of, you know, it's, I think it's unclear, in my mind at least, and you can correct me. But it's unclear, you know, to the extent that Valerie applies to, you know, you know, the facts of Valerie to every variance case that comes before us. And what some attorneys on these cases are claiming, you know, it, it affects everything, right? Right? And it's not the only door. That's a fair, fair point.
Yeah, but it might be required for safety egress. And that's why we require building permits.
That's a, that's a, you know, presumably that would be a building code when the house was being built.
Correct.
Right.
Right. And if they didn't build it according to the plans or the, if they didn't build it according to the permit, more, more to the point, then there are building code solutions for that.
Which has not, and I don't think that case has come before us. This is just, you know, three years later, you know, there's an occupancy permit. It was built to the actual.
I, I, if something turns on a building code issue, then I think it becomes a timing issue for you more than anything else. You're not authorized to rule on building code issues. So it becomes a timing issue. Should it come before you and have a decision from you before it gets a building code decision? Because there was a simultaneous building code application, building code, um, violation case and appeals on the Valerie Holdings case. In fact, it went up to the State Technical Review Board in Richmond, which is the highest administrative body that hears building code violations. And the county won on the building code violations, but it, you know, ultimately it didn't matter because of the, the way that the Valerie Holdings decision came out on the variance.
And so we're, we're still looking at our variance cases under a hardship, you know, that we're looking at, still looking at the hardship, but also like taking this new path into account.
Right.
Right.
It seems like, you know, the issue is always, yes, it, it probably shouldn't be approved, but it'd be very expensive to undo it.
Well, and so now under Valerie Holdings, we have a data point about what very expensive means. So, you know, in your situation with the door to nowhere, you could, you know, put a staircase inside the house so that you will walk up a little stairs to the door inside the house. Don't know how much that would be.
Or seal up the wall, right? There doesn't have to be a window there, you know, a door there, turn it into a window, right?
Right.
So, you know, there are probably other significantly lower cost options than, you know, that, right?
Right. And then the, the question becomes, how much do you get into it with a cross discussion with the applicant? I think you have to rely on the, the staff report for that sort of thing to say, they have other alternatives.
Right.
And if you, if staff's telling you they have other alternatives, then you need to know how much more expensive they are than what the applicant is asking to do. Because that's the only way that you can comply with the Valerie Holdings ruling. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it seems like the amount in Valerie Holdings is probably not as important as when we look at the cost to fix the problem in relation to the property or, you know, houses are very expensive in Arlington, you know, that, you know, 15,000 isn't a lot relative to everything you do with your house.
And whereas in Louisa County, it's a lot more significant. That's a fair point. Okay. Um, so let's turn to ADA variances. Um, this is, uh, an area where there's not a lot of case law. There's some from other states that I'll get into in a minute. But basically, um, if you, if the applicant wants to alleviate a hardship by granting a reasonable modification to the property or improvements on behalf of or requested by a person with a disability, then you can do that. And, um, you can, you can, as I mentioned before, you can put a condition on it that it expires when the disabled person no longer needs that. And the usual requirements apply. You still have, the applicant still has to show that they acquired the property in good faith. There's, it's not a self-imposed hardship. Uh, there's a lack of substantial detriment to neighbors. It's not a general and recurring situation, not a change of use or zoning classification, and not available a special use permit or, or zoning administrator modification. So, next slide, please. The, and this question came up while I was preparing for this, is what's the definition of disability for, for these variances? And it's the ADA definition of, of disability. So, uh, physical and mental impairment, substantial limits, one or more major life activities. And, uh, if it has lasted or is expected to last six months or more. So you've got a bit of a timeframe. It, it's the, under the Americans with Disabilities Amendments Act, um, the standard was loosened a few years ago. And so it is, uh, it is a much easier standard to meet. So there's this, you know, there's a specific carve-out for ordinary eyeglasses. If you wear ordinary eyeglasses, that's not a disability. But if you need like one of those magnifying machines that blows everything up really big, that is a, a visual disability. But other than that, it's going to be, um, uh, you're going to have to do a little bit of a factual inquiry. And so how does that dovetail with the privacy concerns of people who are talking about their personal medical situations? And I, the way I, I look at this until somebody tells me a better answer is that, um, the burden is on the applicant to provide you with whatever evidence you need to have to make that decision that they have, make a finding that they have a disability. And, um, then the question becomes, does this accommodation even address the disability? So, um, you know, if you had, uh, what was that example you had, Rick? Uh, the, um, person who, uh, wanted a, a, a variance for something?
I think, yeah, we don't, I mean, we don't want to talk about.
Oh, that's next week. Okay, I'm sorry.
So we, we had a previous, we had a previous case where, um, um, the applicant was in a wheelchair and had a disorder that, um, had, couldn't be in the sun. Right? So he was asking for an extra four or 500 square feet on coverage in order to build a solarium so he could get, um, sun through glass.
Ah.
Right? Which, which was apparently okay for his condition. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So, so that's, that's an example where, you know, the notion that it would expire when the applicant moves would, putting a condition on that, that he tear down that solarium.
That's not reasonable.
That's not reasonable.
No.
Or, or we had a case where.
So what?
They, they wanted to do a curved driveway.
Oh, yeah. Right.
They wanted, yeah.
Yeah. There's, there are cases from other states about the, the curved driveways and, and all sorts of things. In fact, this on the next slide. Next slide, please. So basically all the things on the left got turned down. Things on the right have been granted for at least somebody somewhere. On the left-hand column, the first, second, and fourth points are changes in use. So that's right out. Can't change the use. The fence height limit increase for a person with PTSD is a case out of Southern District of Ohio in August of 2000. And it's interesting because the guy with PTSD, it's a very, you know, sympathetic character. He got the PTSD serving our country in the US military. However, he'd lived there with a short fence for a long time. And if you increase the height of the fence, it was a hazard to people driving on that street because it would interfere with the sight distance. So that got turned down and went up on appeal to, to the Western Division of the United States District Court, Southern District of Ohio. And so that, that's an interesting decision. I, I found that doing some research for this. And, you know, he'd lived there since 1984. So he comes in, you know, 16 years later, 15 years later, applying for something. Well, why didn't you need it the first 15 years you lived in the house? I, that's a reasonable question to ask if somebody comes in and says, I need this modification. And, and maybe there's a reasonable answer. Maybe my PTSD got worse.
And so that might be a different case had he just moved into the house and he had the 10-foot variance on the less house, right?
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm making up 10.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Absolutely. If it had been something like that, then, you know, it would have been a different story. So all of these are very fact-specific. On the right-hand side, you know, the ramp for the wheelchair, that is something that you can easily condition on the need going away because a ramp can be pulled out pretty darn easily. Encroachment into setback for a carport, these come up in circumstances where somebody doesn't want to go out in the rain to get into their car. Is going out in the rain an unreasonable restriction on your use of...
We get those cases every once in a while.
Yeah. And, you know, I think it's going to depend on the facts. It depends on what the person's disability is. You know, if they are very unsteady on their feet, you know, maybe that, that go kind of away on the side of giving them the variance. But on the other hand, we all get wet from time to time in the rain. So I'm not sure that that's something that you ought to automatically give out. And then the paved parking space in the front yard, again, is usually some kind of mobility restriction that somebody's dealing with. They want to be able to park in their front yard. And then the question becomes, is it a danger to anybody else? There was one case where the, the person wanted, wanted to be able to back up in their front yard and then pull out forwards, but their vision was, you know, a little bit impaired and, and it was very poor sightlines. So somebody walking on that sidewalk next to their driveway would be in danger from them. So that was a reasonable thing for the, the, the board to consider in that case. It's like, what, what other kinds of dangers? Because one of the defenses to an ADA claim is that there's a direct threat to somebody else. And if you can show that there's a direct threat, and typically you'd rely on staff to tell you in the, in the report that we think this creates an unreasonable danger for third parties, that would be a direct threat kind of defense that I think you could, you could do. And then front-loading garages, that's a tricky one because is that the bulk or size or, you know, the size, height, area, bulk, or location of a building? No, it's really just the door. I, I suppose those probably get granted from time to time, but it's really not so much a typical variance that you would think of. So, anyway, next slide, please.
So before we leave that, lots of questions. Please, the ramps, wheelchair ramps that look somewhat temporary all over Arlington.
Right.
Are they just put up and we, because ones never come to us. We've never had a case where somebody's putting up a temporary wheelchair.
It would only need to if it came, intruded into the front yard, the mandatory front.
Sometimes, you know, it's a straight shot up, you know, for almost from a sidewalk, you know.
Oh, wow.
So we have a provision in the zoning ordinance
Okay.
that allows ramps to encroach.
Okay.
That's why we don't get it.
Ramps specifically.
Yeah.
So.
Temporary ramps.
Or just ramps. If they're needed for access, they can encroach.
Okay. So you won't be seeing those?
No. That's only location, though. It may come to you for coverage. So the provision is only, so tempor, we don't, we don't have a, we don't...
We don't have a temporary.
We don't look at temporary very often. We care about everything, no matter how long it's there, generally. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a beautiful Virginia Supreme Court case, I think it was a Virginia Supreme Court case, that found that the, the city of Fredericksburg had annexed some property and they're supposed to have temporary zoning for that property once it's annexed. And so what does temporary mean? Well, 50 years go by. And the Virginia Supreme Court says, it looks temporary to us. Everything's temporary. Take the right attitude. That's true, too. Very true. So any other questions?
So it, it's up to, basically it's up to the BZA to determine whether we feel the disability rises to the level of being a disability.
And whether it justifies.
That means justifies, yeah.
Yeah, whether the, the variance would actually address the, the need.
We, of course, we are, I don't think any of us have any medical training or anything to be able to, to judge this. So that, you know, and, and a lot of times we feel uncomfortable, obviously discussing or looking at, you know, sensitive medical information, which you addressed, right? But that's kind of, I guess that goes with the applicant's burden.
Well, and, but there is the ADA standard, which is it has to have a substantial impact on a major life activity.
That's rough to judge.
Yes.
Right.
But we do need to apply that standard, not just any disability.
Sure, sure, sure.
Like we've had people complaining about their kids being allergic to mosquito bites, and so they have to have a screened porch. And they don't, these have not been approached under the disability.
I get mosquito at my screen porch all the time.
I know. Well, they, we've, they've never asked for it under the ADA standard, so we've avoided the real issue. But, but we would need to, if someone did come forward with that, apply that ADA standard and figure out whether it's a disability.
Right. He would have to say, okay, assuming that this child has a, and it maybe is a doctor's letter, that, you know, this child has a...
Pictures.
Yeah. Pictures of the kid's welts or something?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
You know, of abnormal reactions to mosquito bites.
Okay.
Like I said, they haven't tried to argue that that's actually a disability.
Right.
It's just been raised in other cases to get sympathy. That's...
Okay. Well, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting one. But, you know, so how, and there, I mean, they're making sort of a causal argument that having a screen porch would at least reduce, if not eliminate, the child being exposed to mosquito bites.
That's what, that, that was the argument.
So if that is in fact an impairment that substantially limits the child's normal functions, then you, yeah, but unpleasantness is not...
Right. Well, and we also find out that sometimes the kids also, they do go out to recess at school and things like that. So it's, you know, it's not, and like I said, it hasn't risen to that standard, but we're hearing it on these other cases.
Yeah. So
Thanks, Carol.
I go back to the definition. Is it, is it a physical impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities? And so there's a list of major life activities in the ADA, and you can refer to that, or you can ask the applicant, have you looked at the definition of impairment of disability? And how do you tie this in? Because it's their burden. Okay? That's all I have.
Before we release you, we had, more than one member has, has asked questions about whether or not we should be swearing in witnesses because a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions are doing that.
Yes.
And so I think I just wanted to have a discussion about that, maybe get your thoughts on that or, or the, the applicants, yeah.
Well, yeah, some of them have...
The applicant or speakers, right?
Yeah, anybody who's going to testify.
Right.
Other jurisdictions swear them, and I, I wondered if the court has an expectation that the, that what we're sending up to them is sworn testimony.
No.
Was based on swear testimony.
No, I don't think it, I don't think they have any such expectation. It's never come up, to my knowledge.
I would agree. The court does not have that expectation. And I would, if you don't bond, I would say some BCA's do not swear people. And some do, and some do not.
Right. And you have not.
We have, we have not.
And sometimes I wish we did.
Well, and, yeah, it's an interesting question. And that is a philosophical question that I'm not going to touch about whether, you know, that people actually care about breaking their oaths anymore.
You know, one thing also that's, it used to be that your BZA, when you went up to court, the court didn't take additional evidence, that it was really an appeal, almost just like any other appeal where you're stuck with whatever evidence came before the BZA. That has changed now. So anybody can introduce evidence at the court on the writ of certiorari. And so I think that it's, it kind of makes, in some ways, what we hear as evidence, it's very important to us for our decision-making, but in some ways for the court, it's less important because they can get additional information and any party can produce it.
Good point.
But, you know, we might get a little bit more assurance of that they're going to be honest, but you hope they're going to be honest anyway.
I mean, the thing is, people think they're good judges of when other people are lying. The evidence, the, the research does not bear that out. People are really bad at telling when other people are lying, you know? But you can, you can, if you think you can tell, then you can weigh the credibility and you are the judges of their credibility as, as just as much as anybody else sitting in a judicial, quasi judicial.
I'm good with a nine-year-old, but that might not be for too long.
They're, they've, they've got tells.
Yeah, yeah. That's right.
Yes. The, the little ones are really bad at it, but as we get older, we get better at it.
Is the assumption that if people were sworn, that they would be more credible?
I think that's...
Be in fear of what would happen if they lie?
That's the philosophical debate, right?
That, that's, that's right. That's, are you going to condemn your soul to internal damnation? And some people think that, and other people do not. Uh-oh.
We've overstated. You're welcome. Anything else? Okay. And then the, I think the last topic for Martin, and so the, the number four, that should say BZA slash Arlington for a discussion on the kind of the appeals fee payment timing. Because I know in the, the last couple of months, we've had a bunch of these where an applicant files an appeal, then never pays the fee and then wants to come back, you know, six months later or three months later or whatnot. And then, okay, I'm ready to go, or, or never hear from them again. Right? And so I think that we just wanted to have a discussion on kind of that process. And
Yeah. What would the staff like to see about that? I mean, what's the staff's struthers? I'll put you on the spot.
For us, it's not, nothing happens until it's not really an application that we're doing anything with.
Right. Okay.
So we, you know, in the past, well, whatever, we'd like some guidance, I guess, on how to come forward.
I found some.
Oh, good.
Which we all were a part of in November of 2023.
Okay.
When I was, because...
I must have just started then.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Right. So I had...
Is this the resolution?
No.
Okay, what was this?
We all had meetings.
And what?
We had some, I think we were on a phone call and we talked about the process. And Stephen sent some notes to, it was, we looked this up this afternoon.
Am I on it?
Yes. And into you were on the, I think, on the phone call. So, Rick, you were into Arlova, Blake, Blake was on the email, at least, Martin and myself. And we kind of wrote down what we had talked about.
Okay.
And it's, and we followed this procedure, but then I think what happened was when, I think it all got a little astray when the, with the EHO situation with the court's
Ooh.
decision. And that impacted so many appeals. And I really think that's where it went astray. So I am happy to...
What does it say?
Yeah.
So this is, I mean, in a...
What did we agree to?
I think we all, and we followed this process and I think it worked. So in a nutshell, what we had talked about is that the applicant would submit an application and then staff would review it. And if staff had thought, oh, this, this was a kind of a timely issue to, may not be timely, we'd let you guys know. And then we'd ask, we were going to ask two questions. Would the BZA like to put the case on the next agenda? Or would the BZA like to hear the issue of timeliness separate from the substance of the application? And I can send all this to you. And then we'd also let the applicant know and say, you can withdraw it and we'll just, it'll go away.
I remember that we talked about refunding their, their...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then, so then if the applicant does not pay the invoice, staff will not advertise the case.
Right.
We will consider the application to be complete. If the invoice is not paid within 90 days, staff will cancel the application. Notice of this action will be shared with the applicant. Staff will reach out to the applicant to remind them they must pay the fee before the case can be advertised.
Oh, and I think we picked 90 days because of the statutes.
Yes, yes. And then we...
And I think, and I think, like, I think one of the issues that we have developed since then is that, you know, can we, in order to just dismiss it, can it be just dismissed? Or does that need a hearing? Right? So if an applicant doesn't pay their fee within 90 days, I, I think our current thinking was that that needs a, a public hearing. But I...
You can't act except as a body, is the problem.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
You can only act as a body. The BZA can act as a body to, to make, take action. Whether it's advertised or not, I think that's a separate question. But if somebody hadn't paid their application fee, and you gave them notice to come in and show cause why you shouldn't dismiss it, I think that would be a reasonable way to handle it.
How do you want to give notice?
Same way that they applied. If they applied with an email address, then we send it to the email. If they applied from a postal address, mail it to them?
It's going to have to, it's all through email, right?
Exactly. Okay. So that's all through email.
System.
Yeah.
You would send the applicant an email saying it's been 90 days, show cause why this shouldn't be canceled?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd use the word show cause.
I don't know. Stephen, we might need you to pipe in here because, see, we, we do all of this through permit Arlington.
Right.
And so, and Debbie, do you want to step up and say whether this can work or not?
Right. So, you know, this is kind of what we've been doing recently, but it's just more in, at the hearing or before, you know, I'll email Ms. Ryan and, you know, are there any of these that have been outstanding? Any, any appeal, you know, so it's been a very manual process, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, right. And we can, I guess we can keep doing that. It's just, we, yeah, we just need to understand what y'all want.
Yeah, that was, that's...
And make it, make it work either through, most of our official communications are through, I'm pointing at Debbie because she kind of knows everything about permit Arlington, but...
Like, so my, my concern is, like, like, just hypothetical case, someone files an appeal, right? And then sits on it for, say, nine months, right? And, and, you know, then let's just say to Nihoh Appeal, the neighbor's building a sixplex. And then, you know, in nine months, they decide, hey, I want, I want to do it. And now, you know, well, that's not fair.
That won't happen under what I just read.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Except I think, I think the issue is, is that, like, I don't think, I don't think that we can delegate the authority to cancel a filed appeal to the county.
Well, is it filed if they don't pay? Yeah. If they haven't paid?
If it's not paid, then it's not considered to be filed.
Not an application.
Yeah. My feeling, I want the money upfront. Now, I, I mean, I think, I don't think it's any different from any other case that we have for use permits or variances or anything else. Part of the, part of the way you get the ball rolling
Is paying.
is to pay.
Correct. As it should be.
So
Right.
Then I, then we can talk about whether or not
So my, I guess my question...
or something else.
My question for our counsel then is, if, if someone doesn't pay their fee after 90 days, can staff just cancel it?
Let's look, let's put our heads together. Let me send, look at that emailed again and look at the, the county zoning ordinance and make sure that we're all, that we haven't inadvertently created a problem for ourselves. Carol?
Sounds like we're closer to a solution than we thought we were.
We are. Yeah. I think, I think we are. I think, I do think it's something that probably in sort of our annual report...
sort of our annual report, it is something, when is the fee due? It should be in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Should it not for, I know it's not, I know, because I researched it at one point, trying to figure out how we solve this problem. But.
Right.
So it's not, but I think it's something we ought to.
Maybe it's an ordinance suggestion.
And I know the biggest, the difficulty is that you don't always get all the documentation for the person's request at once. And so you're waiting to have, staff is waiting to have a complete application that reflects everything they need. And what we don't want to do is make them pay before that's complete because then we don't have to refund their money. But we'd have to sort of figure that has to be part of the calculus of when the fee is due, I think. But they ought to go into the ordinance at some point. And I think we've kind of got a, a solution that's working with the 90 days because we have to hear it within 90 days. But.
And, and right, the sort of like the, the open question is whether the, whether, whether we think or the, or the ordinance or the statute requires us to dismiss it or if county staff has the power.
That's what we need to nail that. Because if it's in the ordinance, it would be easy.
Right.
Let's, let's, okay.
Stephen?
Hi?
I think.
I actually don't have anything to add. I just went on camera one and asked that I might want to share. I was just going to say, which Stephen probably could, or Meg could say better than me, which is we do have a completeness check step built into the process. So we're looking at the documents before people pay.
Right.
So that's to, to your point about not having people pay before we make sure.
Right. But they, but so is there a time where you cut off their ability to provide more information? I mean, that's where the timing comes up.
That's much later in the process. That's after they've paid, we've started working on it.
What starts the 90-day clock?
That was just the time we agreed.
But you have a, I think it's a complete application.
The filing.
The filing date starts the 90 days?
That's when, that, that's based on the email that we are discussing. We just, that was the.
Well, there's, it's, the 90 days is because there's a code requirement, right? That the BZA hear it within 90 days.
Yeah.
Of a complete application. But if there's no fee paid theoretically, is that a complete application?
No.
No.
But the statute doesn't have to be completed, it's just filing.
Well, it wouldn't be filed.
This is. There are a number of gaps because the statute was written by a bunch of people in the 1960s that they thought about it. So we'll figure it out.
I think, yeah, we can discuss it and then maybe, I think this is the basis for figuring out.
What's the date of that? Just curious.
You have the email.
November, November 30th, 2023 from Stephen.
November 23rd.
Right. Yeah. And I remember, I now remember it. Right.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty funny. I mean, which, you know, I think we're largely doing that. I think we just changed the.
Just got.
Yes.
Flurried in all of the.
We didn't go, you know, too astray, but you know, it, it's something that keeps coming up. Right?
I'm glad we're figuring it out.
The invoice, when you invoice, does it have a due date on it? That'd be helpful if it did.
I don't know what we would choose. I mean, you've, you've asked to do something, now you pay. And until you do, it doesn't move forward.
Right. So.
It doesn't matter to us when you pay.
But it, it might matter to someone though. Right? So like, you know, the, the neighbor, for example, right? You file an appeal, gets a completeness check, you invoice, and the neighbor is still moving forward. So in.
So I believe we, we inform, and I'm going to look to Stephen or Meg.
I can add to that. So we're, when the application does come complete, then we get it ready for the agenda. That's when we start advertising. That's when the letters will go out. That's when it goes in the newspaper. So they're not going to be aware of it unless their neighbor has already approached them for neighborhood outreach prior, like before submitting.
This, this is for an appeal.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, if you invoice and it's, it's open for three months, and then three months later, you file the appeal, well, then that builder or whoever the, the appeal is for has moved forward. Right? And so they're not in the same position as if they had paid quickly.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the issue I was concerned about of like, Nate, you know, whoever the underlying appeal, they're, they have rights here.
Yeah. Or worse, they didn't start their project because they were afraid of this appeal that they had heard was in the works and it doesn't get paid and doesn't get filed, doesn't get heard. And they're like, well, we've.
They've wasted through. You know, why, I, I can't start until, you know, the six months goes by and then the, the person who's appealing wins by, by default. Right?
If someone filed an appeal and didn't pay for three months, I don't know how we'd find it timely.
Well, that's, that's what we're asking about.
A timely problem if you didn't actually act on something within the, the appeal.
Well, I mean, that's, I don't know. Right? I mean, that would be an, it would be an argument that we'd have to hear.
Right. Somebody.
I think that would actually be the situation we kind of talked about in that email where staff would say that we don't think the application is timely because it is more than 30 days past the action that they are trying to appeal. And just to clear up an earlier question, staff has been using that kind of standard of a complete application. So we consider the payment to be typically the trigger when we receive a complete application. And that's when we would be informing neighbors of an appeal that would be on their property.
But aren't, aren't most payments made 30 days after the action being appealed because of the completeness check and the time that it takes to invoice?
No.
Right? Like, so, so like on day 29, I file an appeal within the 30 days, it's going to take staff at least a couple of days to do a completeness check before you come and invoice me. So I'm over the 30 days.
It is very rare for us to actually have someone who hasn't paid within the 30 days.
Interesting. 30 days from the actual original filing?
From the action.
Sorry, from the act, from the action. Interesting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, that's a situation where we would probably bring it to you and say, we don't know that this is timely because of payment. And the fact that we haven't been doing that, I think is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised by that because like I, that seems, it would seem a little unfair for like an appellant who files, you know, on day 29, they, they're within the day, and then they have to wait for a completeness check, which would take.
We try to do those very quickly.
Okay.
Especially if we know that something is coming in and is up against a deadline.
Right. Right. Right.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Right. So it seems like, like the, really the biggest issue we have is figuring out who, who needs to, who can cancel the application or, or if we need to dismiss it. Right? That seems to be the thing we need to work out.
Yeah. I, I don't want there to be some situation where there's no clear answer to how to handle it. We just need to have a clearer answer to how to handle it.
So that to be resolved.
Yeah. Yeah. Sounds like we're 90% there. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
And then when I talked to Stephen, Stephen had said that someone might want to talk about the county's equity initiative. That's how that number five got put on the agenda.
That's me.
Okay.
We're already there?
I think we're there. Yeah. We're there.
All right. You weren't expecting that, were you? Well, this.
So I have a PowerPoint.
Did you think we'd be here a lot longer?
Kinda.
I don't know how to pick that.
I do. So I, I will try to be efficient. Um, Meg's loading another presentation. We, I meant to do this years ago, sadly. I don't know where the time went, but.
You were waiting for Alex to join us.
Yes. Um, so if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to talk about Arlington County and how we have in the past five years or so demonstrated a pretty significant commitment to equity and racial equity in particular. Just to give some context, in 2017, 2018, there was a steering committee of local leaders who were focused on looking at disparities in health. And they charged forward to create a plan to achieve health equity by 2027 and did a study focused on health outcomes and found that there was a 10-year life expectancy difference depending on who you were and where you live in Arlington. Yes. So that was disturbing to the Arlington community because it's not consistent with our values and who we are. It coincided with the kickoff of a regional effort led by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and an organization called the Government Alliance for Racial Equity or GARE that were starting a learning cohort for government leaders in the DC metro area in 2019. And so in September, 2019, Arlington County adopted an equity resolution, and you can go to the next slide, that recognized that while Arlington is a great place overall, disparities exist. And so cohort kicked off, oops, I was a member. It included staff from various departments in the county. We met monthly with our colleagues from all over Virginia, Maryland and DC. Sadly, it was interrupted by the pandemic, but it concluded in spring of 2020. But in 2019, the county, the, the county, the larger county effort began, which included a definition of equity, which is important because it's the type of term that people define differently, but we have a county definition. It established that it is a priority for the county and use the GARE model, which I'll talk about a little bit, which focuses on kind of four main components. The first is normalizing, which is where, where the dialogue is important and establishing kind of countywide terms and learning for everyone so that we all know what we're talking about when we're using the terms and everyone has kind of a base level of knowledge and understanding and includes a commitment to collecting data and disaggregating it and then using that data to analyze where gaps or disparities exist. Next slide. So our definition of equity, I'm not going to read, but it's about everyone, regardless of your status, having access to reach your full potential and your, whoever you are. So able-bodied, gender, whatever things that make you, you shouldn't predict your life outcomes. Racial equity is about eliminating race-based outcome gaps, again, so that your status doesn't predict those outcomes. And so closing the gaps is less about kind of giving people things, but changing and improving our policies and structures and institutions. And the, the graphic is just one that I like because there's often when you start talking about equity, there is a desire to say, well, what about equality? Why is it, why can't we just treat everyone the same? And I just, it's kind of a clean way of showing that everybody needs different things. Right? And it's not about giving something from one person and taking it away from anyone else, but recognizing that we're coming at things from a different place and we need different things to be successful. Next slide. So the county developed an overall vision and mission for this, which is on the screen. And equitable Arlington is one where everyone's valued, educated, healthy and safe. I should mention that the cohort also included APS. So we were working with representatives from schools on this also. And the mission is internal and external. So it was county staff that kind of started it, but there was an understanding and acknowledgement that this is about everyone who lives, works and does business in Arlington, not just the staff and not just the people who live here, but everyone who comes here to interact and engage. And the four parts of the circle are kind of, this is the GARE theory of change where first you have to normalize something, you have to get people comfortable with talking about it in order to actually impact it. Organize, which the county did by creating a countywide racial equity core team, which has memberships from all the departments. And those teams have then gone on to create plans for their departments. Operationalize is using a racial equity lens as a tool to do our work and then a commitment to assess and measure like how much we've gotten done and what progress we've made. Next slide. So for our department, zoning is part of the Community Planning Housing and Development Department. We updated our mission statement a couple of years ago to be more in alignment with the county's overall commitment to equity. You can go to the next slide. And then this has a lot of information. Oh, I forgot to mention that I can and will send this presentation, which has live links to everything so that if you're interested, you can click around and see all the stuff we're doing. We've done a lot in CPHD and we've led a lot of the county's work. The graphic on the right, if you don't remember anything else that I say, it is a useful, simple way to think about what does it mean to use an equity lens or a racial equity lens? And so what we did, we modified the GARE model, but it starts by asking before you start a new planning process, a new procedure, a new practice, a new policy, to just ask yourself some questions. So who is going to benefit from whatever change you're about to make? And alternatively, who would be burdened by it? Who isn't at the table when you're talking about this change? And how do you know? And then what, what are we going to do about it? So there, on a very kind of simple level, if you just ask those questions, it's actually pretty impactful how it changes your way of looking at something that you might not have thought about before. So we're doing a lot of work. Some of it we've done already. Some of it, some of it is in process right now. I'm going to talk about one thing and then I'm going to be done because it's an example that is zoning specific, which is difficult. And I'm a planner, right? And a lot of this lends itself to big picture, policy, community engagement. It's very, it's a lot easier to visualize how I can incorporate equity if I'm starting a new planning process. It's less, it's less so for zoning work. It's a little harder. So if you go to the next slide, it's an example that we used for something that's, you know, somewhat mundane, but necessary, which is our Permit Arlington Center. So Permit Arlington, as you know, is our, it was a large initiative to kind of bring us into the, finally into the 21st century of, of online permitting. And it, it had to evolve over time. And we, through COVID, we stepped up our efforts to go fully digital, right? We had started bringing on what, changing what used to be a paper process to a fully digital process. We were doing it over time. When COVID hit, we had to speed that up. And so when we were thinking about post-COVID, it was an opportunity to kind of reframe and rethink how we were going to provide service. So pre-COVID, we were on the 10th floor of this building. It was a pretty large space. We had about 100, at least people a day coming in to file permits in person. They didn't need to do that anymore. Right? And so, but there was an acknowledgement that we still had some people who didn't have the comfort level with digital submissions. And so we didn't want to leave them behind. So next slide, we had some goals about making sure that we weren't leaving people behind. At the same time, there was a broadband study being conducted in Arlington about improving digital equity. And there was a statistic that about 16% of Arlington residents did not have home internet service. And so that was relevant. We realized that we didn't really know, we were making a lot of assumptions about what people needed. We weren't, we don't really know who our customers were. And then we also, because we spent a lot of time and effort creating the Permit Arlington system, we didn't want to abandon it and kind of go back to allowing people to do a lot of things in person that we want them to use the system for. So we wanted to make people aware and understand how to use the stuff that we created. So next slide. So there is a tool that is very complicated and asks a lot of questions that we used when we were designing, how are we going to provide this customer service coming out of COVID? And it exposed some gaps in our information, which is like, we didn't have a lot of data. And it exposed some gaps in our information, which is like, we didn't have a lot of data, as I said, about who our customers were. We changed our outreach approach. Our outreach approach historically in Arlington, um, was heavily, has been heavily focused on civic associations as the mechanism to get things out to the broader community. Uh, and that continues to be used, but some neighborhoods don't have civic associations. And then even if they do, everyone isn't active necessarily. For this initiative, if the whole point, and so the other thing is the website, right? We put everything as much as we can on the website. If we're worried about people who don't have home internet access or who have computer literacy concerns, focusing everything on the website isn't right, right? Isn't really, that's not going to be that effective. Um, and so we, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, don't have internet access. Have cell smartphones?
Right, yeah.
And how many, and is the website adapted for small?
Debbie is nodding. She knows better than me. What, you want to come to the table?
Good job.
I know we've had that question before, but do you have any more to?
I don't think I need to say more, but there's, yes, there's a term for it and I can't remember what it is. But yes, the permitting system works on mobile devices and I'm yes.
Yeah, you can do it.
And I mean, it's, it's not going to be great for uploading documents, but in terms of filling in forms, it is designed to, to work on mobile devices. Um, and I'm quite certain that the website is as well. But I am not the expert on the county's website.
So we, you know, we changed our approach. It was happening larger, at a larger scale in the department with some other kind of major things that were going on at the time. And so we did more outreach. We use partners to kind of tell people about things for us. I think we even, you know, took information to like hardware store, like places where we thought people who do development work would go, right? So we kind of forced ourselves to be more proactive in sharing with people what we were doing. And then we started to think about what we wanted to provide and to be more focused and structured in what we did. Before it was eight to 4:30, no appointments. Anyone could come in and do anything from apply for something to talk to someone for like 30 minutes about all their thoughts and ideas about their deck, right? With kind of no control or, um, and so it's like, that's not really efficient. And then we also had some anecdotal data about, well, most people come in between like 10 and two. Like, do we really need to like be open at eight o'clock in the morning for like that trickle? So we kind of thought about what we really needed to do and tried to be focused on what we could and should accomplish. So next slide, just, our goal was to serve those with the greatest need. We define that as people with limited computer literacy. So even if you have home internet service, but you're just not that savvy. But people who couldn't do the work at home, like our big thing with permanent Arlington was like, you don't have to come in, like you don't have to wait in line. You don't have to get in your car and come here. You can just do it from home. It's like, well, not everybody. People who had limited English proficiency and then just first timers. So if you just move here and you don't know that there's an online permitting system, you're going to go to the county building to try to do your business. So that was who we were focused on. And then in, built into the process, when someone comes in, they have to log in and we show them how to do that. They give us an email because that's kind of how we're talking to people. And then when they're done, we send them immediately a survey. And we ask them questions about who they are, what they needed to come here for, how well we did. It's voluntary, right? Everybody doesn't do it, but now we have data about who's coming in and what their needs are. So next slide, I promise I'm almost done. So this is just a graphic that's kind of old. But I, I think this was like over a year ago. This was a snapshot of the age distribution of the folks who were coming in. And not that I'm an ageist or think that that's indicative of people's computer literacy. The highest group is over 60, right? So, which is kind of what we were expecting.
I mean, over, open that up to over 50.
Yeah, right, yeah. So we kind of, you know, our assumptions were somewhat validated. We, we were able to see trends, like, you know, we launched a new permit for DES. We would see the numbers for that group go up more. And, you know, it's just information that we can use and hopefully update service improvements. Certainly, we asked a question about, would you want to be open more? And a lot of people said, yes. Right, yes, right? And we did end up expanding. So we started two days a week, we expanded to four. Um, and that's where we're at now. So it's just, you know, this was a racial equity tool, right? And it was used to do, to help us do our work better, which is helping lots of people, no matter their status, um, in a way that uses data and helps us learn more. So that's just kind of a practical example of when we say, apply a racial equity lens, this is an example of what that could look like, um, for not the kind of sexy, hot planning effort.
Our Loma, did, did this, did these numbers also correlate to race?
We have that data too.
I mean, this is age.
This is age, yeah. That was the one that was most interesting to me, but, yeah.
But, so it's like the, the 60 and older, you know?
You mean like cross?
Right, so it, you know, what, would that be equally among races or was it?
Yeah, I, I, we probably could.
Yeah.
You're getting beyond my personal ability to crunch, but yes. I believe we have the raw data.
Is, so is, is this who came in person?
Yes. Yep, yep. So next slide, which I think is the last slide. Just so, just, um, just so you're aware, part of the countywide learning that I mentioned is for every county employee who was working here at the time and everyone who has been hired since, the county created a series of modules, which kind of like step by step by step goes into what is equity? What is racial equity? Why do we care? And they're short, it's like 15 minutes, it's a video. Sometimes you have to do a little quiz. And so they kind of take you on this learning journey and they are now available to the public. So if you're interested.
They're very, very good.
Yeah, you can.
When you send that out, there'll be links under modules so we can go to them.
Exactly. And I would encourage you to check it out. I have been a member of the leadership, volunteer leader of the American Planning Association and always feel like I have to plug their products. So, um, they issued an Equity and Zoning Policy Guide, which is actually pretty good. And I was looking at it recently and was pleased to see, number one, because zoning, you know, we don't get as much love. It actually has a section, I'd encourage you to check that out too, when I have a copy here. It actually has a section that is relevant to you because it talks about practicing for people who make decisions, right? Decision makers, boards and commissions about zoning. And you will be pleased to know that we're doing a lot of the things that are being, um, recommended. One was educate your members about. So yeah, check that out. And then for a couple of us who are certified planners, um, in our code of ethics is, you know, if we, we participate in the planning process, this is what we are responsible for doing. So, um, that is all for me. And as I said, I'll send this out, oh, so sorry, one more slide, oops. It just had a question mark, you don't even have to put it back up. So I figured you might be like, why are you telling me? What does it have to do with the BCA? And the, the real answer is we don't know yet, right? So we're just, you don't, you don't have to do it. It's literally just a question. It's, we are going to, in earnest, start trying to incorporate this into this part of our work. And so I don't know what that's going to look like or when, but I didn't want you guys to be like confused or wondering like, why are, like, why are they talking about this now? Or where, where is this coming from? Like this is why, and we're going to figure it out as we go.
I was trying to think as you went through it, like, what are we?
Yes.
Really, you know, how does it apply? How is it going to affect what we do? And it just seems to me that, you know, one of the issues out there is who has ability, who has resources to make a better case before the BCA without, you know, and some people have less, some people have more. And how do we try to ensure that we're making fair decisions without getting affected by that or try to make sure that we're getting fair? And I think one of the things that we probably benefit from is that staff helps people prepare coming in. And, and people are always talking about how much help they've had from staff. But we also need to consider whether we are making sure we're getting fair information from everybody who's coming before us.
That's it for me. Sure.
Um, I, I realized I left a very quick item off the agenda and I'm going to put Stephen on the spot if he happened to put a slide together on, um, any upcoming training on land use and BCA. I know we had talked about it, so I don't think I'm doing anything too crazy for you, Stephen.
No, I didn't put together a slide for it. I just wanted to remind folks that we have, um, that annual course that I know that some of you have participated in. It's something that I encourage, um, folks who haven't gotten the opportunity to go. We actually sent Brett last year, uh, to do the same course. So, um, that's one that I'm aware of, but we'll continue to look for opportunities that exist and send them along to you as we can.
Yeah, so I went, I went to the course, um, it's in, is it in Richmond? I forget where it is. It, it's, it's an hour away from here, basically. Yeah, uh, it's always, it's mostly online. You have to show up for one day at the beginning and one or two days at the end. I think it's like three days total between the beginning and the end. And then you have weekly, um, assignments on reading and you have to fill out a little form and, and respond to some questions.
And a test.
And a test. I don't know if they still do that, I don't know, I don't remember doing a test.
Approximately, when is it? Does anybody?
I'll send, I'll, I'll, I'll figure it out and send it out to everyone who, if you want to go. I think they do it twice a year, yeah. I think it's August. I'll send, I'll send out the information. I can find it and send out the information. And, um, historically, we have not had problems finding funding to send one or more, uh, BCA members. So if anyone's interested in going, we can work that out.
Four of us went one year.
Yeah. And so I went my first year and I found it very useful for someone who had no idea, um, what I was doing at the time. So not, not claiming I do now, but at the time I definitely didn't, right?
But also, also useful to understand that BCA's are different.
All BCA, right, all BCA's are different and we have.
They don't all handle the same things the same way that some of what, some BCA's look like a planning commission rather.
Some of them get paid.
Yeah.
But, you know, some of them get paid, you know, but, you know. Oh, thank you, Stephen. So April, actually, it's probably, that might be, I'm guessing that's full. They tend to fill up at some point. But we, I, I can figure that out and I can, I'll send out an email and then there's one in the summer, exactly. I think, I think I took mine in August, um, last time around. But, but I can figure that out and send out an email to my colleagues.
I think I went to the same one with Judy. It was all online. There was no interest in it all.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what the current.
Before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've, and they've rebranded, it used to be called something else, but now it's BCU. But I, I will send that out, I will send that out.
Cause, but anyway.
And then obviously the last thing that we do, um, every, every year are officers, so, uh, officer elections. So I'll just say, you know, I've, I've been.
We just talked about it. We have inconclusive.
Inconclusive.
Swearing.
Discussion.
It was about swearing of witnesses, not of the swearing in of Mr. Kamala.
Well, no.
I love that word. Um, so I'll just, you know, I've been chair for the last two years and I am, I'm pretty happy with where, um, things are. What we've, I think we've navigated pretty successfully, a lot of turmoil and, um, nailed down bylaws and process and procedures. So, um, I'll, you know, if anyone else wants to take the reins and, uh, take a turn, I'm happy to. Ms. Freshman? So I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy to step aside and let someone else, uh, you know, take their turn.
I think this is a process of elimination. And I think we've eliminated everyone but Rick. So I nominate Rick.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, you know.
Second.
No more talking. Well, it's been, um, it's been, I made a nomination. It's been seconded by Ms. McCroskey, all in favors, like by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for your confidence and how misplaced it may be. Um, and so then that opens up the vice chair nominations.
I'll nominate Ms. Malice.
Again, process of elimination.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? We have another, uh, continuing. No resume change, we have not been ousted yet, so until next year, I guess.
Yeah, well, wait, wait till we get the, you know, what is it, the chainsaw out. We're going to make some changes.
No comment. Um, the agenda having been completed, I will.
Oh, Ricks.
Ryan.
Has his hand up.
Stephen.
Yeah, before you guys conclude, uh, there were a couple of just small things. While you're doing elections, I was wondering, though he's not here tonight, Blake is back with us and I was wondering if you wanted to make any changes to your secretary.
I think we can handle that next week.
Okay.
Is there a reason we do it now or? I just say it's better during a public hearing. Yeah, I mean, this is public, but there's no one here.
All right, um, one other last thing, just a note. We have a group that's in charge of liaisons to different boards and commissions. And they just gave a reminder around to folks that the electronic meeting policy, which you adopted a couple of years ago that allows for remote participation in meetings. It's actually something that should probably be renewed every year.
We just did that in our bylaws, it's now part of our bylaws.
Okay.
We adopted our bylaws at the last meeting.
What do we need, I mean, it's, it's a big deal if we.
They're supposed to be updated annually. Right, so you're going to do your bylaws?
Yes, and, and we put a, we put a thing in our, um, in our bylaws that we would re-adopt them annually because, for.
Because they're going to change in July, probably, July 1st.
Yeah, and, and I guess, you know, when, 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 and if that changes in July, we'll do a quick update.
So.
And I, and I, I'm sorry, Alex.
Yeah.
The legislature's going to meet and probably update the remote policy.
So does it need to be updated? Do we need to update right as soon as the legislature updates?
And the county has policies on that as well, so you might want to check in on that too. It's up to you.
How do we know if the county, county made a policy change?
Because it's all on the website and it, that's what. I think that's what Stephen's trying to.
Has something updated?
Yes, they, it gets updated every year, the county's policies, electronic policies and their requests.
Are we already out of date of the county policies?
Uh, I don't know, I haven't looked at Jill's policy.
It's in, it's in the bylaws, so.
Yeah, well, I didn't focus on that because that's your policy, so, um, but.
And we just mirrored state law, so we, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, so, but we just wanted to make you aware that the county has electronic, its own electronic, um, meeting policies and, uh, recommended, uh, policy. And it requires updating every year as well. So we just were doing the sort of FYI and it's all on the website. I've got links, that's what, actually, we've got the links and stuff we can share with.
It doesn't say, it just says annually.
Yeah.
General Assembly said you will update it annually. And they typically have new laws sticking in effect in July, so it gives you a nice little window.
Yeah, usually, doesn't it, like when the general assembly is finished, it becomes effective in July. But have they finalized it though? The changes?
No, because the governor still has action.
Yeah, he hasn't signed it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So, so we, what we did in the bylaws is state that we're going to re-adopt them annually at our organizational meeting so that that covers our electronic meeting policy, which has to be adopted annually. We'll also have to just pay attention to whether, as of July 1, we end up being out of compliance because the legislature has. we end up being out of compliance because the legislature has changed something and we might have to make another amendment. Just.
I think you can be our parliamentarian.
And, and just, just to follow up on that, you know, I sense that we'll probably have some minor changes to our bylaws coming up shortly anyway, so you know, we will, we'll work on that.
Yeah, we, we conveyed our comments to Mr. Crim and I hope you all look at them and thanks for, for.
And I know, I know.
Thank you for providing those.
Yeah, I have, so I have not because I've been swamped at work. As you can imagine, everything that's going on.
Oh, yeah.
And, but I, I have, yeah, well, only now that I've had to return to the office, I'm at work now.
Yikes, yikes. Yeah, thank you. And I, I think in general, most of our comments are like, could we just kind of take some of it out and discuss it like we did the, what we did tonight? Because that's the kind of thing I think would be super helpful.
Yeah, and I just, I, we just weren't, I, I had talked to Stephen that like, we just weren't going to be prepared to do that tonight.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, you just got them.
Right, and so we, we will engage and, you know, I think Carol and I are going to work on, on that and we'll be in touch, you know, we'll figure out how to, how to move forward. But you know, I think everyone anticipates that there'll be some, at least minor, you know, tweaks.
Awesome, thank you, thank you very much. Would you like me to forward this email that I found to you guys or?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, sure, we, we found it today, so I can forward it to, it's from you? How about, do you want me to forward it to?
How do you just send it to, you can send it to me and I'll send it to everyone else.
Okay, I just, yeah. I know, like I just get all paranoid about that, so I'd like to maybe.
Send it to me.
Send it to you.
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah, so that makes sense.
The two.
Okay, this, agenda having been completed, this meeting is adjourned.
Cheers.